Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Red Bank Planning Board will come to order this fifth day of June. The time is 7:00 PM. Notice this meeting is being held in accordance with the Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231. An adequate notice this meeting has been provided by notice to the Asbury Park Press, Two Over Times, and posted in the main lobby of our building as well as the municipal website. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Jordan?
Ellis?
Shoyt.
Dan McCusso?
Here.
Thomas Welsh?
Hello.
Michael Ballard?
Here.
Arthur Murphy?
He's not here.
Juanita Lewis?
Here.
Lou Demento?
Here.
Christina Bonatikis?
Here.
Barbara Boss?
Boss.
David Cassidy?
Here.
Frederick Stone?
Here.
Thank you.
We've got some administrative matters unless someone has an objection. We can do the minutes from April 17th, May 1st, and May 15th all together unless anyone has a question specifically about any of them. Okay. Does anyone have a... Any questions otherwise, a motion to approve all three?
I believe I have to abstain from the 17th of July.
Okay. I'll just abstain from all, I'm not sure. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do a voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Any abstain? Any opposed?
Aye.
Councilman Ballard and Juanita Lewis will abstain.
Great.
Next up, we have a resolution of approval for 9/11, West Street Block 34, Lot 1. It was in our packet to review, packet. That's how old I am. If we get a packet. It was in the email that we got to review. Does anyone have any questions about the resolution?
You'll have to all read because it's an important resolution. Of course. Well, the important thing in the resolution is the determination that we didn't have to determine which law applied. That's the major conclusion. And then have you a look. There we go. This one. If I can get to the conditions. I think I... All right, can you get it down?
I can do it, Mike.
Okay, here are the conditions. First of all, deploy vehicles must be off-site. There'll be no curbside pickup. The applicant will provide an outdoor trash receptacle for people online. The applicant will instruct its security personnel to restrict any outside queues from extending beyond the front of the premises. There'll be no consumption of cannabis on-site. Reference to the engineers that are available, 26, which have to deal with the improvements of parking lots on the curb. Compliance with shady tree commissions require liver payment and lower than four trees. And then the rest is basically...
Boy. Does anyone have any questions about the resolution? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the resolution? I'll second it.
But, you know, we did make a correction. I don't know what version you had. They're closing at 9:30, 9/11.
I don't think the hours were the hours in...
Yeah. It's in the...
So we'll just make sure that the record reflects that we're closing at 9:30.
We corrected it. I'm showing the...
Okay. Our barber's moved it, I seconded it. Go ahead and do it.
Dan McCusso?
Yes.
Michael Ballard?
No.
Juanita Lewis?
Actually, they shouldn't be, well, yes. Should be known as a resolution. What's up there?
Lou Demento?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Barbara Boss?
Yes.
David Cassidy?
I'm required, Mr. Percy.
Oh, that's okay.
And Frederick Stone?
Yeah.
Thank you. Our first public hearing tonight is 45 North Bridge Avenue, Block 4, Lot 6. The applicant is Monte Verde, New Jersey, Inc., in the VR1 Zone for conditional use. Site plan approval and bulk C variances. The applicant is seeking conditional use approval to permit a retail cannabis sale at the premises. The applicant also seeks site plan approval or waiver of site plan is deemed applicable by the board. The applicant also seeks bulk variances to allow any existing non-conforming conditions to remain and allow the applicant to satisfy its parking obligation by providing 11 off-street spaces in addition to five on-site spaces for a total of 16 where nine are required. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Jordan. Before I begin, I have to announce exhibits if I may approach and hand those out just for ease of reference.
Sure.
You will swear in our engineer. You swear to tell the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay.
Do I have to push this or is it...
Just pull it close to you.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. Richard Wells, Marter and Grinder, here on behalf of the applicant, Monte Verde NJ, Inc. Very excited to be here this evening. Again, we're requesting approval for change of use or conditional use approval as well as site plan in order to allow the change of use from an existing licensed medical marijuana dispensary to incorporate adult-use sales into their operation. This again is for the property known as 45 North Bridge Avenue that is identified as Block 4, Lot 6 on the Borough of Red Bank Tax Map. Thank you. Couple of housekeeping matters. The application was deemed completed on April 27th. On May 25th, we published notice of the application in the Asbury Park Press and we also mailed certified notices of this hearing to all those on the property owners list. That list and those notice materials were sent to the board secretary for review as well.
Is that a agreement of invitation in this hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have a few exhibits that are pre-marked this evening for ease of reference. Those have been handed out to members of the board and the professionals and are also available for members of the public as well who have been provided with copies. Those exhibits are pre-marked. I will probably refer them out of order anyway, but I'll do my best. In those exhibits, we have our witnesses pre-identified as well. Their names and affiliation with the applicant is listed in Exhibit A1 and our list of requested variances and waivers is also identified as Exhibit A2. If you'd like, I could have our two witnesses sworn now or we could have them sworn as they present testimony.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you very much. A little bit of background on this application, if I may. As I mentioned at the opening, this is an application to convert an existing medical marijuana dispensary to adult use. Now, this applicant's a little bit unique. Through a competitive process under the state's law governing medical cannabis, this applicant in December of '21 was one of 30 applicants who were chosen or awarded a permit to dispense medical cannabis to qualified medical patients. They were one of 30 out of roughly 200 applicants seeking to do this and that award was presented to them in December of 2021, at which point they sought to perfect that award. The applicant then began the process of identifying a compliant property, perfecting that award, which they did in Red Bank. They chose and began the leasing process for 45 North Bridge Avenue as the tenant. They secured a lease with that building and they commenced the process of getting building permits and construction permits in order to operate as a medical dispensary. In September of 2022, they received local zoning approval as well as their building permits in order to commence those tenant-fit-out projects. So what you see here in this plan, the site plans, the interior floor plans, things like that, those are all approved by the building department. They are close to completion. We are hoping that they'd actually be done by this meeting and that we could be operational, but construction, as you know, takes a little bit longer than anticipated. So had we been able to move through the construction process a little bit faster, we would today be an operational medical marijuana dispensary. It's therefore part of our application that we require no other site modifications to accommodate adult-use sales into the operation and our testimony will show how the existing site and existing improvements are sufficient to do so. So as part of their process to what I'll call convert to adult use, the applicant doesn't require any additional approvals from the CRC or the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. The applicant wants commencing operations as a medical dispensary, is simply able to seek administrative approval in order to incorporate adult-use sales into the operation and our testimony will show how the existing site and existing improvements are sufficient to do so. So as part of their process to what I'll call convert to adult use, the applicant doesn't require any additional approvals from the CRC or the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. The applicant wants commencing operations as a medical dispensary, is simply able to seek administrative approval in order to incorporate adult-use sales into the operation. We are here this evening because Red Bank has a specific ordinance governing adult-use sales, as you know, and that is why we are seeking both conditional use approval and approval of our site plan this evening. So any questions on the background before I begin testimony and...
I'm a little bit confused that the medical marijuana never came before us.
No, it doesn't have.
It doesn't have.
No.
Sure, go ahead.
So medicinal cannabis is considered an alternative treatment center and therefore the borough passed an ordinance, I forgot the date, pardon for that, that alternative treatment centers are considered as retail and therefore it does not have to get a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
But now you do need a conditional use.
Now would you correct? Okay. So that being said, again, we're here seeking two things. First, conditional use requirement and second, site plan approval. With respect to the conditional use requirements, it's up to the board. We have submitted with our application a narrative outlining our ability to comply with each one of those 12 conditions outlined in the ordinance. I can have my client provide testimony on that to further confirm that we satisfy those conditions if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Great, thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Mr. Wells, you can pull the one from the other table over if you want.
You want to raise your mic? You want to tell the truth? Tell the truth, nothing but the truth. Loud.
I do.
Pull that mic real close. Thank you. Can you state your name for us, please?
Elizabeth Egan, E-G-A-N.
And Elizabeth, can I have you listen here?
Yes.
Can you state your position with the applicant, please?
I'm the founder and majority owner of Monte Verde.
Can you tell us just a little bit about your involvement with Monte Verde, why you chose to do what you do and why we're here?
Yes. So like I said, I'm the majority owner of the Monte Verde. I've been in the healthcare industry for over 25 years and I've lived in Tom's River, New Jersey for over 35 years. I've seen firsthand how people can benefit from cannabis products. They may not qualify for the medical cannabis, but they're not approved under a qualifying diagnosis such as sleep disorders, pain after surgery, or even just arthritis. So once New Jersey approved the cannabis, I did my research and reached out to some friends that can help me obtain a women's home license, which I did in 2019 for the medical dispensary, which I cannot wait to start treating those patients, but now we would like to set it for adult-use purposes. So not only is it necessary from both the perspective of needing a wider spectrum of need and just from a business perspective as more patients simply utilize the adult-use dispensers over time. So I really appreciate your time here today and thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. So without further ado, let's move on to these conditions. And as the owner, I just wanted to hear from you how we comply here. So the ordinance in Section 490-56.2 has 12 conditions that we have to show we comply with in order to be deemed a conditionally permitted use in this zoning district. There are 12 conditions, subsections A through L, I'll just refer to them numerically for ease of reference. So Conditions 1, 2, and 3 really have to do with compliance with all state and local approvals to some eyes. Do you have any objection or any reason why you can't comply with your state permit, any local approvals received here today, and any local or state licenses that you may receive this evening? Thank you. Fourth condition requires us to confirm that this is not a home occupation. Is there any residential component to this operation?
No.
Fifth condition notes that this cannot be housed in a vehicle or movable structure. This building doesn't move to your knowledge, correct?
No.
Great. Sixth condition is with respect to odor. So we have to mitigate odor and we'll get into this during our operational detail a little bit later on, but for our purposes here, are the odor mitigation equipment that we plan to put in place compliant with this condition?
Yes.
Are they compliant with state odor mitigation standards?
Yes.
And our testimony that Mr. Lyles will provide later, are you confident that based upon that equipment, odor will not be detectable from outside the building?
Yes.
Thank you. Seventh condition requires that mechanical equipment is required to have baffles and screening on it, both from a noise and visual perspective. Now, we're replacing the HVAC systems, right?
Correct.
And these are all new high-efficiency, low-volume systems?
Yes.
And as shown on our plans, we have baffles or screening around those systems, correct?
Correct.
And it's our understanding that those meet state noise requirements?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight is that our security plan must be reviewed and vetted by the police department. Is it your understanding that our security plan has been vetted?
It has.
And as part of your medical license, you also have to have your security protocol vetted at the state level a little bit more rigorously, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Any objection to entertaining comments, suggestions, requests by the police department to the extent they have comments on your operation? And going one step further here on your opening, of course, you plan to coordinate that with the police department so that opening operations are not a surprise then?
Correct.
Thank you. Ninth is that we're required to show the police department has access to your security footage. Any objection to providing the police department with that access?
No.
And your security footage is also accessed at the state level as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Tenth, we have to have compliant cannabis signage, meaning no depiction of cannabis leaves, no, you know, use of the word weed or other sort of imagery that would, you know, attract younger members to your business. Your cannabis signage doesn't contain any of those things, right?
No.
It's fully compliant with both all local and state requirements?
Yes.
Thank you. Eleventh, we have to submit a written report detailing our compliance with things like odor, security, nuisance mitigation. We did submit that report, correct?
Correct.
That was signed and notarized as required by ordinance by Mr. Lyles, our chief operating officer?
Correct.
And any objection to adopting your, Mr. Lyles' testimony later on those subjects?
No.
Thank you. Twelve and finally is that our location must be compliant with the, what I'll call the buffering requirements of the code, that a cannabis operation could not be located within anywhere where, basically drug-free school zones, 1,000 feet from schools, churches, things like that. We consulted both the Borough's Cannabis Map as well as their own independent research and we are not within 1,000 feet of any of those sensitive uses, correct?
No.
So any objection with confirming that we are fully compliant?
We're fully compliant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Egan on compliance with the conditional use standards?
Anyone from the board have any questions? Does anyone from the public have any questions for Ms. Egan specifically about what she's testified to so far regarding the compliance? There's going to be plenty of opportunity for other questions and comments, but we're just going to try and break it up on the testimony as it comes. Okay. Proceed.
Thank you, Liz. I'd like to turn things over now to our chief operating officer to really get into some of the details of the operation and adequacy of the site as well. Devin, can you bring me up here, please? Counsel, could you be sworn in?
Yes. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
How's your name and where are your results?
My name is Devin Lyles. I reside in Boulder, Colorado.
Devin, you gotta pull that mic real close. You're a soft talker, so get right in there so we can hear you.
How's that?
That's excellent.
Yeah, my name is Devin Lyles and I reside in Boulder, Colorado. Yes, but I am co-owner and chief operating officer for Monte Verde.
Thank you, Devin. And this is not your first rodeo, safe to say, correct? Can you tell the board a little bit about your experience in cannabis operations?
Sure. I'm an early 20-year veteran in the cannabis industry, having started my career in the early 2000s in California where they had medical marijuana legalized as of 1996. I then moved back to Colorado where I'd originally been from and was CEO and co-founder of a company there that I ran for about eight years until 2018, at which point I became a consultant and in this case, both a consultant and a co-owner of this endeavor.
So as chief operating officer, Liz kind of directs the policy, the strategy, and things like that, but your job is really to ensure that this site functions as best as it can possibly function as a dispensary and that all industry standards and compliance items are followed, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. I'd like to just go over the operation from a couple of standpoints. First and easiest, I think, from a customer's perspective and maybe to help us along with that narrative, we can consult what I've pre-marked as A5, already going out of order here, which is a copy of what we submitted with our application. So it's not a new exhibit, but it's Sheet Z3 from our architectural plans here. And it's floor plans just to help us review things from the customer's perspective. So Devin, let's talk about getting into the facility. A customer comes in and they are entering into the service lobby, correct?
That's correct.
And it's at that point where your first point of ID check takes place, right?
That's correct. They're one of the two check-in windows inside the lobby.
And that ID check is not really done by just eyeballing an ID, it's done by a licensed person who's trained to do that and it's actually scanned, correct?
That's correct.
So once the person is ID'd and confirmed that they are of legal age to enter the dispensary, they then enter into the sales floor. And there are two ways that they can go from there, right? One being pre-orders and the other being sort of a browsing or general talking with the sales associate?
Correct.
So let's talk about the pre-orders then. Let's say someone has pre-ordered a product at your dispensary. What happens next? Do they have a dedicated point-of-sale kiosk?
Yeah, we can have, we can designate any number of the registered depending on the volume of pre-orders to be expressed checkout. So essentially, if someone has already made their product selections online, all they need to do is come in and, you know, show their ID and go through the same process we just articulated in checking their ID and making sure they're legal age to enter and purchase a cannabis, that they have a valid ID. And then they'd be directed to go to a point-of-sale system where they could get checked out more quickly than someone who was just a walk-in customer.
And once they do that, they're assigned to their pre-order kiosk, they pick up their order, their ID's actually checked again at the kiosk, right?
That's correct.
Great. They pay for the order, they take their product out, and they're on their way, right?
That's right.
Roughly how long just from entry to exit do those pre-orders take, does that process take?
They should be, on average, around five minutes.
Great. And let's talk about it from the other perspective now. So someone wants to come in and browse, maybe they want to talk to a sales associate, they pass the service lobby, gotten their ID checked. When they walk into the sales floor, is this like a liquor store where all the products are just displayed on the shelf for browsing?
All the products are behind the counter. The counters are, you know, have our employees standing at them. Customers are not allowed behind the counter. Product is taken out each morning and put in a backstock area behind the counter. So if someone makes their selections, the employee takes it from the backstock area behind the counter, puts it in a bag, and makes the transaction.
So no products are resold as play for someone to, you know, grab and go, as they say?
That's correct.
Great. So same process, they talk to a sales associate, they make their selection, product is pulled from the back, ID is checked again before purchase, purchase, and they're on their way, right?
Correct.
What about the length of time for that average transaction?
So that average over a 12-month period should be no more than about 10 minutes.
So after purchase, regardless of whether they're pre-order or walk-in customers, there's no on-site consumption permitted, right? There's nowhere available either inside or outside for customers to consume on your property?
Correct.
And on-site consumption is just not permitted in general at your establishment, right?
No, absolutely not.
That's actually a separate license, it's a separate approval, which you don't have, and you take that very seriously?
Very seriously. Not interested in that kind of license.
With respect to consumption off your site, obviously you can't control anything off of your site, but based upon your experience in the industry, is it more common for consumers to just get in their car and drive away or do people actually consume the product outside?
I mean, it's just so prohibited in every market that I've been in. It's just a big no-no. It just cannot happen from a licensing perspective.
Mr. Lyles, pull that mic a little closer or speak up, please.
Okay.
Did you hear his license?
It's just so extremely prohibitive to not consume on-site of any market that I've operated in. It's one of the biggest no-no's and it's absolutely in the licensee's interest to make sure that it does not happen.
And in order to make sure that that consumption doesn't happen on your property, you have signage in size that says no consumption permitted, correct?
Correct.
Your staff is also trained, if anybody asks, they say no, you're not allowed to consume?
Correct.
And no encouragement to consume, you know, hey, go down the block or, you know, five feet off the parking lot and you can consume there. None of those instructions are in here.
Absolutely not.
Great. I want to talk about some of the back-of-house operations now from an employee's perspective. So all your employees are vetting, they have to comply with CRC regulations, and they're also trained in security protocols, but your specific operating procedures, correct?
That's correct.
What do you do just generally to train your employees? You don't have to go into detail, but just summarily.
I mean, we have extensive standard operating procedures that have already been submitted to the CRC at the state level and have been approved, including extensive security procedures for checking in customers, inventory management, how the inventory flows into and out of the dispensary.
Thank you. So for deliveries, in order to get product into your store, those are accompanied by things like Sprinter vans that you commonly see from Amazon, correct?
Correct.
They're not accompanied in 18-wheelers or anything much larger than that, that just doesn't happen in the cannabis industry, right?
No, it doesn't.
So Sprinter van comes on-site roughly how often?
Well, for recreational, this could be, you know, every other day.
Every other day, sure. And those deliveries ideally are off-peak hours or off-operational hours, correct?
Yes.
What is the average length of time for those deliveries from the time the Sprinter van pulls up to the time they leave?
We would hope that wouldn't take much more than half an hour.
And with respect to security of that delivery, the distributor or the delivery driver also has certain security protocols that they're required to follow, correct?
That's correct.
With respect to trash and waste, this just generates your normal office waste, right? There's no hazardous material, nothing special that you have to dispose of here?
That's correct.
And that's handled, you don't even need a dumpster for that, so we don't have a dumpster on-site. Trash is handled in your standard trash receptacles, correct?
Yes.
Handled by, I believe it's a pride hauler?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to cannabis waste specifically, there's going to be no usable cannabis waste in the trash, right?
That's correct.
If some, for some reason you have a recall, there's damaged product, somebody spills a soda on it, whatever, you don't just chuck that product in the trash or flush it down the toilet, right? There's actual reporting requirements that you need to follow?
That's correct.
And more often than not, is the distributor or the delivery company the one who takes that product back, correct?
That's correct.
And both you and that delivery person complete the required reporting, register or not register, but report the product is disposed of or unused and they dispose of it off-site?
That's correct. If there's a facility where they have the means to do so.
Great. So just to reiterate, under no circumstances will there be any cannabis products thrown in the trash.
That's correct.
Great. On the subject of security in general, are both the interior and exterior of this facility covered by camera coverage?
They are.
That coverage is monitored 24/7 by a third-party security company?
The video, it's all being recorded.
Correct.
It's not being monitored, as in being watched by a human 24/7.
Correct. But you have a third-party security company that does handle those cameras, right?
Yes.
In compliance with state requirements, they've vetted the security system, is that complies?
Yes.
As well as the recording requirements, I believe it's 30... That coverage is monitored 24/7 by a third-party security company?
The video, it's all being recorded. It's not being monitored, as in being watched by a human 24/7.
But you have a third-party security company that does handle those cameras, right?
Yes.
In compliance with state requirements, they've vetted the security system, is that complies?
Yes.
As well as the recording requirements, I believe it's 30 days that the footage has to be stored.
That's correct.
With respect to just moving around the facility, security-wise, are your employees on a basically kind of a key-card type of system?
Well, they're given access according to their role. So not all employees have access to all areas of the dispensary, most notably the vault. Only certain key employees have access to that and that will be on a key-card system. Otherwise, it may be a pin pad access to the exterior doors.
Great. So with respect to those key-card systems, you're able to control who accesses where in the building and when they do, you can see who accessed what room and when, right?
That's correct, just with regard to the vault.
Correct. And I want to hit the vault as well. So product storage is in the vault, what does a vault mean? Can you describe that security generally to the board?
Well, generally it has to meet certain requirements at the state level. I would say because we're already, you know, have been vetted and this vault has already been vetted and approved by the state to meet their requirements, which are certain DEA requirements. I could go more into the actual physical characteristics of the vault if you would like.
Safe to say a little bit more robust than two layers of drywall?
Absolutely. It's concrete reinforced block with steel rebar and wire mesh at every third level of block.
And those, like you said, that meets DEA requirements at the federal level?
Yes.
Great. With respect to just some general aspects of the operation, our ordinance permits us to be open from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. Is it your intent to be open for those hours at first or in general? Or how do you intend to use those hours?
It is our intention to be open in those hours initially. That doesn't necessarily mean we'll stay open for those hours. From a business perspective, we'll be analyzing when exactly our sales occur. If being open those hours isn't justified by the sales volume that we have in that data, we may choose to cut those hours back because they're not justified by the sales.
And when you're open, let's say you're operating at peak capacity, maximum volume, based upon your industry experience operating a number of facilities, what is our anticipated peak customer demand per hour for a facility of this size?
Forty-seven per hour.
And what percentage of those forty-seven?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Was it forty-seven or forty-seven? Sorry, forty-seven.
What percentage of those forty-seven per hour, again, during your peak hour, do you anticipate to be pre-orders versus walk-in?
We anticipate that number to eventually reach 50%.
So 50% of your customers then spend roughly five minutes onsite with pre-orders, the other 50% spend about 10 minutes onsite, walking in, kind of browsing with a sales associate, right?
Yes, on average.
And our floor plan displays 10 point-of-sale systems?
That's correct.
So with those 10 point-of-sale systems, what would be, you know, if all 10 were staffed, what would be the ability to process customers using all of those 10 systems?
In terms of?
Peak customers per hour, what could that process?
We just said forty-seven per hour.
Correct, that was our actual anticipated demand. But in terms of what the facility could process, you know, if all 10 of these were staffed and all 10 were operational, what would that mean for the ability to process? Would that be over forty-seven?
Yeah, it would be perhaps double that.
And with our, I'm going to move now to, sorry, Exhibit A4, which is our copy of our site plan. So with that anticipated volume, we have five existing spaces onsite. It's your intent to reuse those spaces, correct?
Yes.
Would those five spaces be sufficient to accommodate the mix of both pre-order and walk-in customers?
I don't believe the numbers bear that out, that it could handle all, the big number that I just said, the double.
Great, so.
It could come close to handling the forty-seven per hour.
So from an operational perspective, it might need a little bit more than what's onsite?
Yes.
And as part of that, in raising that need for extra spaces, have you or has Monty already obtained the ability to use 11 off-site spaces?
We have been in process and are still in process of securing those 11 additional spaces.
You currently have parking passes for those spaces, no, correct?
We did, we did purchase 11 municipal parking passes.
And we also are in the process of perfecting an agreement to lease those spaces exclusively?
That's correct.
It's your understanding that we have an LOI submitted to the borough? It's sitting, given administrative circumstances, we'll say, taking a little bit longer than it's expected to get that LOI signed?
Yes.
But you intend to use those 11 parking passes for employees at first to make sure that parking both onsite and anywhere off-site is first and foremost accessible by customers, correct?
That's correct.
And I want to talk also about queuing or queuing mitigation. Now, assuming that you have, you know, forty-seven peak customers per hour, even though your point-of-sale systems can accommodate more than that, there may be a certain circumstance where, you know, your first couple weeks of opening or so might experience some large demand, you're working out the kinks. What are we doing to mitigate queuing outside? Can you talk about those processes to the board?
So we have plans for a virtual queuing system. So folks can walk up to the outside if we're not able to allow them in due to our capacity being breached. They can scan a QR code and it will immediately put them into a virtual waiting room. So then they're asked to leave and wait somewhere off-site or go around errands, do something else. And then when we're able to accommodate them, basically we will communicate with them via text message in this system.
And with respect to your pre-orders, so on top of that, what we'll call virtual waiting room or that text system, your pre-orders also have the ability to be scheduled within a certain window, correct?
Yes, if we need to do that, we can.
And you can also limit the number of people who can schedule a certain pre-order time? So you have control over volume from, you know, the length of the window, whether it's 15 minutes, 20 minutes, to the number of people who can actually schedule a pickup order in that window, right?
That's correct.
And the goal of utilizing that system is to be able to adjust, to meet demand and ultimately to reduce, if not completely eliminate, queuing along the outside, correct?
That's correct.
In the event that those systems have some kinks to be worked out or maybe the first day or two even it takes a little bit to work them out, you're not going to accommodate queuing along Bridge Avenue, correct?
That's correct.
If at all, you want to direct people along Brower or back into their cars, like you said, with this text wait system, right?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to move on to odor mitigation here. So again, we're looking at the outside of the building and you heard Liz's testimony that odor wouldn't be perceptible from the outside. We're just selling packaged products here, right? There's no open flower, no processing going on here, all packaged?
That's correct, it's required by state regulation to be prepackaged and sealed.
So notwithstanding the fact that it's already sealed, it's stored within your vault, you do still have odor mitigation systems in place, right?
That's true.
Can you summarize what those odor mitigation systems look like?
Yeah, so one is called bipolar ionization. It's a unit that's installed within the rooftop air-conditioning unit. And basically it emits ions that spread onto the volatile organic compounds, neutralizing them. Additionally, we have inline carbon filtration boxes that have multiple layers of carbon filtration for the return air. So as the air is sucked back into the unit, it passes through the carbon filter before being conditioned and distributed back into the environment.
And is that, is it safe to say that that kind of two-layer odor mitigation is something that's also commonly used in a cultivation facility?
It is, yeah. It's overkill for this situation.
Thank you. Any objections to confirming that with those systems in place, odor will not be present from outside the building?
That's correct.
And if for some reason there is an issue and the off chance something breaks down, you have the ability to mitigate that and just adjust that system as necessary, supplement it to do whatever it takes to make sure there's no odor?
Yeah, we can supplement with freestanding carbon filter scrubbers.
But like I said, that's temporary, just in case the system breaks down.
That's correct.
With respect to site lighting, again, site lighting is existing, but we're replacing the existing site lighting as shown on Sheet Z2 here. These are all downward-facing lights. They're not having any sort of, you know, blinking, flashing neon, no waving lights, anything crazy like that, right?
Correct.
It's a goal to provide just enough lighting for security and pedestrian safety purposes with the goal of not spilling over into adjacent properties, right?
That's right.
And is it your understanding that this plan by replacing existing lighting with downward-facing shielding lights enables that to happen?
Not shielded, but directed into downward, not out.
Correct, thank you. The lights around the parking lot, now after all operating hours, we don't want the building and the whole lot to be completely lit up after you guys close for business, but you do need some security lighting, right? So what is the plan for this overnight security lighting after hours?
The plan, pending approval, is to have them on a motion sensor so that they're not constantly on, that would be triggered by motion. We have built into the system the versatility to have them on timer so that they could be on. But I guess our preference to meet both the security requirement and not creating light pollution for our neighbors is to have them on a motion sensor.
And on the subject of light pollution, any objection to working with both the borough and your neighbors if there are questions or issues with light pollution? Maybe redirecting a light or two just to make sure that you're a good neighbor from that standpoint?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Last, I want to talk about signage is we're just replacing signage in kind, correct?
That's correct.
And we have a copy of our exterior elevations that we've pre-marked as Exhibit A6. Can you confirm for the board that the locations of these signs, including the awning and the existing freestanding sign, that was the same signage that was used by the prior dry cleaning company, right?
That is correct.
Same size, location, style of sign, everything like that? You're not changing it just except for the copy?
That's correct.
And none of these signs are proposed to be blinking, neon, changeable copy, anything of that nature, right?
No.
Are they internally illuminated or do they have a small spotlight on them from the outside?
A small spotlight from the outside.
Thank you. Couple notes on the review letter we received also. So the board engineer asked for a couple of plan revisions in terms of just correcting dimensions, amending plan notes on here just to make sure that our plan was up to snuff. Do you have any objections with making those plan revisions and plan notes?
No.
We also submitted a written response to the board engineer's letter dated today. But, you know, we're going to go through those responses just for purposes of record noting, you know, the lateness of that submission. Sorry, I lost my place here. So first, are you aware of any drainage issues on the site?
No.
And with respect to landscaping, there's no landscaping proposed now, but there were some comments about tree shade tree requirements, additional shrubbery requirements, things of that nature. With respect to the shade tree requirement, any objection to posting a $1,500 payment to the tree trust fund? And with respect to landscaping, we have kind of a small site here if you look back on A4. Not too much we can do, but we're still proposing some foundation plantings, right? So you'll provide a landscape bed and some foundation shrubbery along both the Brower Place and Bridge Avenue frontages of the building?
That's correct.
Thank you. Even though we can't exactly satisfy the requirement for, I believe it was 10 trees and 21 shrubs, is the landscaping going to, to the best of your ability, meet the intent of that requirement?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. There's also a shed or two present onsite that's not identified on our plans. And that relates to another question that was brought up regarding the NJDEP monitoring on the site. So Devin, is it your understanding those sheds are associated with the NJDEPs monitoring of the site?
They are, yes.
So those sheds are meant to be temporary, correct?
That's my understanding.
And you're, again, you're the tenant, fortunately not the property owner of the site?
That's correct.
And if I may, a brief monologue. It's our understanding that the NJDEP mitigation efforts here are actually state, they're taken over by the state. Again, the applicant is not the property owner, so there's not really much they can do to work with the DEP. But the mitigation and monitoring efforts that are going along here, kind of similar to most of the dry cleaning sites that you'll see, have been taken over by the state. So as the operator here, it doesn't really affect us, but to the extent possible, we'll comply and work with the DEP if they need access to anything to continue their monitoring efforts. But it's our understanding that monitoring has been going on since roughly 2011 and is still taking place, again, under a publicly funded or state-funded DEP monitoring program. That's basically all we have to offer on that, right?
The monitoring is more recent than 2011.
That's right, the actual program started in 2011, but the monitoring is more recent.
That's right.
Thank you. Appreciate that. With respect to ADA compliance, so our plan notes one ADA space, four, three standard-sized spaces and one compact space. Even though we're just restriping the parking lot, ADA requirements state that we have to become compliant even though we're just restriping here. Our nine-foot space is non-compliant with a van space. So in order to meet ADA requirements, we want to provide one ADA van-accessible space. And to do that, we would have to widen this nine-foot space to 11 feet, is that correct with your?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
And an 11-foot ADA space combined with a five-foot access aisle would meet ADA requirements. But in order to do that, we would have to reduce two of our nine-foot spaces to eight-foot spaces. Are you willing to do that and restripe those two additional spaces so that we can make sure we meet ADA requirements?
Yes.
And would it be your preference to have those spaces reduced to eight-foot compact spaces versus just eliminating a space completely?
Yes.
Thank you. And it's your understanding that with that van space, the five-foot access aisle would be consistent and compliant with your ADA requirements as an operator?
That's my understanding.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, I do want to address parking. What we're doing here is, it's our position initially that we don't require a parking variance, but we're trying to go above and beyond and make sure we address all potential scenarios. Under the borough's ordinance at Section 490-146V1, if you are changing your use from a non-residential to another non-residential, basically commercial to commercially uses, not expanding the building footprint and no other variances or relief are required, you don't have to seek variance relief if your deficiency is less than five spaces. Based upon the ordinance requirements here, we are considered an unspecified retail use which equates to, based upon our square footage, a parking demand of nine total parking spaces. We have five onsite. That creates a deficiency of four. That same deficiency was the one that was used for our medical application. It was used to basically transfer, or I'm sorry, change the use from the dry cleaner to a medical cannabis dispensary. It was the same square footage, same parking deficiency of four spaces and therefore variance relief wasn't required. We're effectively doing the same thing here. We're unspecified retail, moving to another unspecified retail. No change in building footage, no change in parking demand and no variances are required. Again, all existing conditions that were received, building permits as a part of our medical operation. So initially, it is our position that variance relief is not required. But again, we recognize that operationally, probably going to need a little bit more, which is why we went above and beyond to get those 11 additional spaces. The ordinance does permit satisfaction of your parking requirement for a number of off-site options, one of those being through securing off-site parking under the exclusive control of the applicant or by leasing parking spaces from the parking utility. As was stated, these are borough-owned parking spaces, so they can't be under our exclusive ownership. And we are in the process of finalizing that lease with the parking utility. We believe we're close to getting that done, we haven't received any objections so far. So it's our position here that, you know, first, we don't require variance relief. Even if we did, we're able to satisfy the off-site. Even if we did, we're, we're able to satisfy the off-site, I'm sorry, the parking requirement by utilizing these off-site spaces. It's our position here that we meet the, the intent of the ordinance that way, and we're trying not just to meet it, we're trying to exceed it, which is what we really want to do to be good neighbors here. So if you'll notice in the application, it's, we kind of left it up to the board. If the board thinks variance relief is appropriate here, we have requested it and we've noticed for it. Alternatively, if the board thinks variance relief is not appropriate and we can satisfy via off-site parking, we've also requested and noticed for that option as well. So we appreciate your consideration on that issue when the time comes. Devin, I sort of took over for a second, but any objections to incorporating that monologue as your own?
No, that's fine.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't.
Any questions for, for Mr. Lyles before we open things up?
I have a couple of questions. Very good presentation, thank you. I would like to know, if maybe I missed it, number of employees?
So number of employees on shift for recreational would be 15 to 17.
15 to 17?
Correct.
At, at one time?
Yes.
That's, that's max?
That's max.
Not all day, it's a small one.
And how many clients would you allow in the building at a time?
About the same amount.
That's squeezing. It's a small building.
You know, it turned out bigger than I thought. The walls have gone up. The occupancy is, is 34 total.
Okay. I, I, I see that as probably tremendous, but I'm not an engineer, so I don't know. Doesn't give you much. There was some others things. And I, I guess that's true.
So feedback on the number of employees, how many of that 15 to 17 would be security personnel? Are you planning to have full-time security personnel physically in the building?
All of our staff are considered our security personnel.
So you don't have any separate security?
That's correct.
And are any of your employees armed?
No.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. You're approved for medicinal purposes, so even if this change of uses did not, you'll proceed with opening as a medicinal dispensary, correct?
Correct.
My big question here is, and you testified that you have substantial experience in opening operations like this, is that you have a single-family residential next door in 43 North Bridge. Have you ever opened a dispensary next to a single-family home?
No, I've not.
Do you have any way of measuring what the impacts of this dispensary will be towards a single-family residential home?
I have no way of measuring that and whether it would be different than, say, a liquor store. No, I don't think it would be substantially different.
Right, so. What were the, do you, do you know the hours of the dry cleaner previous, the, the business that was there previously?
I don't.
You don't? I, I'll be honest, honestly.
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven. I'll be candid, at 10 o'clock, besides the fact that I'm concerned about those impacts on that home next door, that's what separates this plan from others that have come before this body to me. I have concerns about the hours of operation and being permissive, but I just express them, it's, you know, going to 10 o'clock at night, it'd be pretty, pretty late, especially with people next door. Would you consider reducing at the outset as a condition of approval your, your hours of operation?
I just want, I have a hard time with that just because that's what the, the ordinance permits.
But I have the right to ask if you consider it as part of approval.
Yeah, I think the, the testimony was that 10 p.m. would not be the end-all, be-all all the time.
Right.
That it would be scaled back based upon demand. If the demand's not there, there's no reason to be open. If the borough changes operating hours, then we have to comply with them.
I understand. So, okay. So you're saying, no, you would not?
The answer's no.
I got it. I appreciate the answers and the questions, thank you. And you did make a very nice presentation, by the way, so you should come and visit more often.
I'll try, thank you.
I, I just have a quick question. Because you seem to have the timing down for the purchases. How many products will you have available for sale?
It's tough and.
Yeah, it's tough to say, but, uh, you know, there could be well over 100 different products in the recreational between the different strains of cannabis flower to the category of edible products, to the category of concentrate products.
And the average turnaround time for a person to make the purchases, 10 minutes?
Like I said, over an annual average, yes. A, a really low machine should be able to do 10 minutes.
Thank you.
And even if a, a customer doesn't purchase in advance online, can they see all of your products online in advance before visiting the store?
Yes, they can.
Can they do that without having an account on your app or website?
Yes.
Okay.
I know, but it's, it's in our interest to encourage, and that's why I said in my testimony that, you know, we hope to get that number up to 50%, but it may take some time to get there because it's encouraging customers to, to shop in that way.
Okay. I know you had a, Mr. Wells, you'd mentioned a response to the engineer's letter. Do you want to do that or do you have questions first?
I just had a couple. Could you just recite the, the occupancy by calculation? I think you said it was 34 of the building?
Yes.
And I don't recall seeing or hearing anything specific to. Is somebody else's microphone?
No, it's all you.
How about that? I'll try to stay back a little bit. Could you speak to the, so the medicinal, albeit not open yet, your intent is to conduct both operations once licenses convert?
Yes.
And could you give just a brief summary of how those two things interact? If there's any differences between the two that would present any challenges for the operation of both at the same time?
No challenge. We're actually both, you know, motivated by our own mission, but also required by the state to continue, not only continue to serve medical patients, but also to give them preferential treatment. So we may have dedicated point-of-sale systems. And actually, as a condition of converting with the state, we'll have to satisfy their requirements for how we will take care of patients in light of the increased volume and demand of recreational. So we may reserve spaces for them within the parking lot and behind the building, give them dedicated hours that they could come in and shop, to giving them dedicated, letting them skip the line essentially and get to a point-of-sale station for the recreational customer.
There would be times when perhaps you'd have interusing of retail customers versus medicinal customers in the building at the same time?
That's correct.
The other, I guess, comment I'll make is, Mr. Chairman, just kind of addressing the parking question, there is a section in the ordinance that was properly cited. My belief and understanding is that section where you're talking about changing from commercial to commercial, so long as there are variances or other waivers required, that was really geared towards administrative approval because in some cases those, that was basically in deference to, if that's the only thing that would trigger somebody coming from a, a like use to a like use, have to come to the board. There was a provision made that that was felt was an appropriate number of spaces that as long as you were within there, you, you wouldn't have to come to the board. So I think we're in the gray zone a little bit with respect to that, insofar as the ATC use didn't require any board approvals. So that was really just like a local zoning approval. So there's some differences there. One question that kind of came up in conversation with Mr. Wells and I was any variance relief that may or may not have been required as part of the ATC. The only thing really is they have pre-existing conditions that are within, you know, variance condition level. They did add the ADA ramp across the front of the building. There's question on whether that was elevated enough to, to be considered part of the building or whether that should be considered part of the sidewalk. Again, slightly gray zone, not overly impactful to the application. It's really a board decision, and I'm sure there'll be perhaps a little more conversation about the parking. I think that the testimony that you've heard here tonight is that giving the ability of employees to park at the off-site location makes a lot of sense. It's typically what we strive for. They'll probably talk about something on street parking that's available. Obviously, all of the applications that we've heard thus far, we want to be mindful of impacts to neighborhoods and residential sections. Clearly, this area was always intended to be the sector of town where the cannabis seemed to be best oriented. So I think that's from the, from the approval level, that's, that was the conversation at council. So I think those are a couple pieces of information that are important. I just wanted to weigh in on that, the parking demand question. I think the other elements, now are you going to have engineering or architect testimony or?
No, I, I didn't want to overcomplicate because we weren't changing the building, so.
So do you want me to wait or do you want me to kind of go through maybe more of the point-by-point stuff that maybe I just wanted?
Let's go through the point-by-point in the letter.
Okay. So Mr. Wells basically took my letter and provided a response dated today. I believe that to be relatively.
Use monitors.
Officially reiterate my request for improved, improved microphones in this council room. All right. So I, I said that the council for the applicant had prepared a response that we received earlier today, generally as a point-by-point, so I'll kind of touch on the important pieces there. So the first one was the conversation. You picking me up?
Yeah.
The first one was the conversation they just had regarding the parking and the off-site, the demand as part of the, the section 146 requirements. We talked about ADA, the ADA parking space and their compliance with the amendments to make that width appropriate for the standards. Existing utilities will be reused, there's no proposal to change those. Again, the parking probably will be talked about a little later, but that's, testimony has been provided therein about the off-site. We'll probably want to talk about methods of securing that approval if the board thinks that's necessary. I think the applicant has indicated good faith efforts to deal with the parking utility in terms of trying to lock down those approvals. We'll kind of defer that to a later conversation here tonight. I had mentioned that the sidewalk along Bridge Avenue has some uplifting around some trees and that the corner ADA ramp, it is not fully compliant. The applicant had agreed that they would replace the sections of sidewalk as appropriate, as required, and also the ADA ramp on the corner. I think that's your testimony as well. Let's hold that, let's hold that for conversation.
Just, I, I think that the concern was just because we put in the current ADA ramp at the building at the request of, of the boroughs.
It's been approved by the building department as it is.
No, they're, they're talking about.
This is the street.
This, this section, right?
At the corner of Bridge and Warford.
And, and replacing that.
That slab with, you know.
Sure, yes.
Okay, that, that is a yes, sorry, we're unclear on.
I thought that was. So we talked about off-site parking, we talked about the ADA clearance, the modification of the ADA van accessible width to be compliant with the standards. There were a couple of, so the existing parking lot previously had a few design waiver-type challenges. The width of the area was not quite up to snuff, so there's a couple dimensional requirements. The applicant basically has asserted that, you know, operated as a facility there for so long that some of those negligible changes. I don't necessarily disagree, I think there are a few waivers, but the, the testimony is that the site operated satisfactorily all these years as, as a, another facility for, I'll be up, dry cleaner, thank you, let's draw a blank. So those were a number of design waivers that theoretically would be required as a new application before us tonight. Again, we're in that gray zone of, this, this is sort of a, a change, so it's not really a full site plan where they're doing full levels of improvement. We had noted that there was a fence installed. Assume that would be the southerly side adjacent to the neighboring home, I believe that's six foot and went to sort of the front of the building. Maybe we'll get a little more testimony on that, since that's the extent. Again, this, the project is a little bit unique in that it's not typical that we see an application that comes in where construction is already ongoing. So basically, they're doing a tenant fit out, which is their right by permit through the building department and zoning approval previously. So they're sort of working on two parallel tracks with tenant fit out for the medical ATC use while also coming here before this board for the retail conversion and home. I have no objection to the commentary about the LSRP, that's typical. I think you've heard that testimony from several applications. It's typically a long-term monitoring process, certainly with dry cleaning facilities, they are known for groundwater contamination. So that's typically, it can be a 10 to 15 year process of monitoring, observing, usually the groundwater background levels reduce over a period of time without really any interaction. So that'll just be a continuation of the LSRP standards as monitored and followed either by a designated LSRP or sometimes it does go into the direct oversight of the DDP. The applicant agreed to do the sidewalk replacements as needed. The other question I had made was Brower Street is a little bit beat up. There are cases where we have site plan reviews which have improvements going on. Again, this is a little bit unique in that they're not doing much, they've been really trying to occupy, but not doing much. I had suggested perhaps they consider doing paving improvements along the frontage, which historically we would ask for on a site plan. Again, this is a bit of a gray area. I know the applicant had indicated that, that that wasn't necessarily in their plan for that, so the board would have to kind of weigh in on whether they think that's appropriate for the scope and level of the application before us tonight. Excuse me. The other testimony, I think, is some of the nuisance mitigation. We heard a lot of testimony on that. I think that's appropriate and applicable based on all the testimony that we've heard in other places. This retail component, it is all sealed, it's all packaged, the, the stigma of. The stigma of the original couple of applications that came in for growth facilities are the ones that really had the issue with the odor and really polluting the neighborhood with the skunk smell. Every application that I've heard, it's basically, it's consistent. The state wants this to be highly packaged, no one's touching it outside of the end-user off-site. So it's in-house, none of this is to be, shouldn't smell. I appreciate the testimony that they have backup systems in place for air scrubbing and air handlers, ionization, all that seems appropriate. The applicant said perhaps overkill, but we appreciate overkill, we don't want to smell it. We're doing it, the neighborhood won't smell it, so I think that's appropriate. In terms of the trucks, Sprinter van, that is exactly what I've heard time and time again. There will be no 18-wheelers, it's just not indicated for this type of use. So I've seen that in many cases, but that's the testimony. I think that's reasonable based on my understanding of these operations. Again, the hours of operation were really driven by the ordinance, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., subject to any and all consideration the applicant is willing to commit to. I think the operational narratives were generally well-thought-out and well-written for the application. Testimony was that there's no drainage improvements, since there's really no significant site improvements. The testimony was also that they're not aware of any particular drainage issues on the site. Landscaping and lighting, I don't really have any objection. It's a pretty small site, so I don't think they can really go crazy greening this up. I think foundation plantings would dress it up nicely. They just don't really have much room to do anything beyond that. Commitment was to provide a payment to the shade tree fund, that's appropriate. I'm okay with the security lighting being motion activated for the parking lot once they leave. There's really no reason to have it lit up other than for security purposes, I think that's appropriate. I believe that the testimony regarding the signs was also appropriate. They are replacing three existing signs with three proposed signs. That'll be generally same size, shape, location, in compliance with the ordinance.
And where's the third sign? I see the sign...
There's one on Brower, there's one freestanding small sign on the ground, and then there's a canopy sign on the front entrance door.
Okay.
So I picked up largely the commentary...
Anyone else from the board have any questions?
One more for me. You said the security as the fact that you are not having any specific security guard, but you're having all of your employees being security people. I understand the concept. Were you required and did you present the police department with that plan? And was it approved?
Yes.
They approved that? Okay.
Barbara, I reached out to Chief McConnell the other day, asked him specifically if he provided an email response. He has reviewed it and has no problem with the security plan.
Okay, so every other one has had a very specific, very specific security plan?
Can I go back to the virtual queuing that you testified in? And I'm just curious, because you're saying that to mitigate crowds in a location like this, you implement a virtual queuing system. What's the efficacy of these systems at your other sites that people actually utilize them? Or do you find that people still wind up partially using those systems and also still gathering outside waiting? I'm just curious what the impact that could see on that system is in your other sites.
I'm not used to other sites, so I couldn't speak to it. It's new to me.
Okay, so your other sites, do people queue outside? Do you not have the same kind of volume of customers? So there's not a need for a virtual queuing system?
Same volume, it just hasn't been a necessity or a requirement.
Well, it said it was a requirement, but why was it not a necessity elsewhere?
Because queuing was allowed outside. And it's our understanding that, I mean, one, we want to mitigate it because we are adjacent to residential, but it's also our understanding that the newly revised ordinance also disallows queuing outside.
Try to get implied for thinking.
Yeah.
I have a question regarding your signage. So the current work that you're doing right now at the site, you'll be installing the signs and for the medicinal business, and those same signs will be used for the recreational...
That's correct, yes.
And the fence, your plans show that it... Is it a solid fence or is it a...
I forget the term that was used to describe it. Yeah, it's board-on-board, but you can't see through. Board-on-board...
You can see through it?
You cannot.
Okay, is it possible for you to extend the fence to where the building begins?
It does come up to the front edge of the building currently. Do you mean extend beyond that to the side?
And you can keep it in the same location instead of, because your plans show that it's set back...
It could be...
Like it goes up midway to the building? Is it possible to keep the existing where?
Yeah, and I think that the discrepancies, these plans were more likely than not drafted before that fence was put in. So the current fence, the board-on-board fence that goes up to the building, that's going to remain?
It was approved as it is now.
And that's it's...
Correct.
And that all the interior work that's being done, that's being done and won't be touched again for the new use of the recreation?
That's correct.
Are you going to have any ability, and I'm sure the answer is no because it's just my craziness, to monitor your clients and parking in the Granville Apartments? I see they have a huge parking lot, which is not used very much in the daytime, but they do have assigned parking there. Are you looking at signage or anything that the apartment parking lot is not a private, that isn't a private parking lot?
We don't have plans to do so, but we'd certainly be open to signage.
I'm looking, it isn't, all I see is empty parking spaces and vehicles, it isn't a place to park.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, certainly open to having a specific signage. I assume we need to get that approved as well.
Thank you.
Do anyone from the public have any questions? Okay, so let me explain how we're going to do this. We're going to break this up into two parts, where we do questions first. Questions to the applicant regarding anything they've testified about. If you have comments about the application, that will come later. So please try and focus what you're going to talk about upfront to questions. So who wants to come on first? Suzanne, come on up, you know the drill.
Yes, I do. Suzanne, it's still in 25 Seater Street, I do. Talk fast. One thing you didn't mention was about armored car or how the cash would be moved in and out. You talked about the delivery of the product, but what about the cash?
Yes, we've contracted with a service that specializes in picking up, delivering cash, delivering change.
And what's the time? Is it going to be the typical eight to 10 hour or nothing early?
That would be more during typical business hours and not after.
You mentioned about your security cameras and your in-depth H-back system. What happens when the power goes out? Do you have a backup generator or something?
We have the ability and the approval to add a generator. We have the electrical built-in to add a generator later. It's been approved as our current building plans. And we have backup battery as required for the security systems. But as we stated with regard to odor mitigation, we believe it to be a non-issue because all of the product is in sealed packaging.
And I did live at Warford Place for about two and a half years, about six years ago. There are instances when there's a lot of parking issues when there's a funeral across the street on the front of Granville Towers. And to Ms. Bowes's point, the parking spots are, one's given to a resident and then their spouse or roommate, whoever usually parks in the street. When there are, unfortunately, big funerals, there's been a lot of monitoring by Granville at some times to keep that transient comment of, hey, there's a spot and I really want to get into the funeral, I'm just going to sit anywhere. Do you, are you aware of those instances when that area does become very high-impact, traffic-y, and there really is no parking spots for like afternoon service and evening service?
No, I'm not specifically aware of that impact, no.
Great, thank you.
At what frequency do you anticipate the cash pickups?
So it's very much dependent upon volume and amount of cash. But with recreational, we can anticipate three times a week pickup. And I would like to add also that there are two safes. There's a daily drop safe in which the retail associate will deposit there when they close out their shift at the end of each day. That cash gets counted by the manager on duty and placed in a safe that is inside the vault. So that's our long-term cash storage is in a safe in a vault waiting to be picked up by the service, which could be as frequent as every other day if necessary.
Thank you.
Are you, do you plan to take credit cards?
Debit cards, what's called a true pin debit system, where it's the actual transaction amount.
And where will the van, the sprinter van be parked? Within the parking area or on this street? And then the deliveries are, where is the delivery happening? Or pickups were on the arm, the money truck?
So either along Brower Place near the back door or if a spot is open in the parking lot. Yeah, if the handicap spot is open, it would be that one because it's closest to the door. But when they show up, they have to first come and check in and present their credentials so that we know that they're authorized to be making a delivery.
So the remaining spots, I'm sorry I missed that in the testimony, that's going to be converted to compact car, cars spaces. So how will the vans...
Two of the spots would be converted to compact, not all of them.
Other questions?
I do. Linda Hill, 64 McLaren Street. Thank you very much, I just have two questions. First is, will you, could you, would you require your employees who are working during the day to park in those permitted spots that you are acquiring?
Yes, we would.
You will, you will?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, and I don't mean this to come off from left field, but as far as your prospective employees, I'm sure that there are many standards that you have to go through for the state, but do you have any requirement that your employees be citizens as opposed to say permanent residents, green card holders?
Yeah, we're committed to hiring as many as we can within the community.
But what about their citizenship status?
If somebody's permitted to work, they're permitted to work. I don't know, I don't understand what someone's status has to do other than the fact, as I'm about to be reminded, that some peoples, based on their status, cannot purchase marijuana. Someone's legally allowed to work, I think that's, you know, the standard we need to look at.
Yeah, unfortunately, the U.S. Customs and Immigration Service doesn't agree with you, and permanent residents regarding, you know, having a green card are not allowed to be employed by or to purchase.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, then those people aren't permitted. So I'm talking about people permitted to work.
So I'm asking whether that has been a consideration? Okay?
So the question is specifically to people not, while permitted to work in the United States, not permitted to work in your industry. Have you taken that into account?
No.
Based on their status?
No, we just follow the federal labor laws and employ people who are allowed to be employed.
Okay.
Please look into that, if you would, thank you.
Thank you.
Next person with a question?
Phil Malato, 43 North Bridge Avenue. On the parking, you said you can have like 15 to 17 employees? Oh, you said you're going to have between 15 and 17 employees.
That's correct.
So if you have the spots, they're municipal spots, right?
Correct.
Can anybody park there, like they always have them?
As of now, they can, but as we testified, we're looking to secure them for our exclusive use.
But you don't have them yet?
I checked.
Because Baravino, that's packed every night with those spots.
Yeah, we have permits to park there, but they're not exclusive.
So you really don't have the spots then, the parking spots? Because if Baravino's using them, I mean, everybody uses those spots. And like she said, when you have John Day, you have the green spot, I mean, the Greek spot takes up all of Bridge Avenue on weekends. You have the Italian ice place, there is no parking. So I don't understand where the...
Our observation has been that those spaces are mostly empty during the day. Our employees will be coming in at the beginning of the day and they will have access to those spots.
All right, your employees are parking there, so where are the customers going?
There's...
There's nothing.
There's behind the building and there's street parking.
Very little, because between Granville and Baravino for lunches, there's not many spots. There's really no spots.
I guess I would have to disagree that there are no spots. So I've had to walk the streets and see that there are spots.
I've been there 45 years and I've seen it a lot. And also, you were saying that deliveries, do they come after hours, you said?
No, they don't.
They come during hours?
Yeah.
Because I do have a problem with the hours to, from eight to 10. I have a lot of, taking away the quality of life for a lot and so on. Especially on the weekends, I have a big problem with that. And also, you said if you have a lot of walking customers and it gets full, where are they going to stand?
Well, as I said, I mean, we're going to say they can't stay on the site. They have to go off-site and have to register with the virtual...
Because there's a lot of foot traffic up and down Brower Place too, between the bus stops on Allen Place and Warford. Then you have a bus stop right in front of your place.
Mr. Malato, I appreciate that you're asking questions, but try not to slip into commentary after it. Stick to the questions. Yeah, talking about that there's no parking and...
There's no parking.
Well, I understand that that's the way you feel about the situation, but when the comment section is, you can come out and say whatever you want. Right now, just stick to the questions, which you're starting with every time, and I appreciate it. But just end with a question and not then with an observation of the neighborhood. You can do that during your comment period.
All right, that was it. Can I ask an engineer question? Can I ask an engineer question?
Absolutely.
You made the statement that that area was, was always, uh, looked at for cannabis. Why would you say that?
My reference was that was the... Just talk to that. I, I was not offering really a professional opinion on that other than those were the areas designated by council when they chose to adopt an ordinance. Uh, the northwestern section of town was the primary area that was considered in consultation with the, um, the school zones and things of that nature that there's been a lot of talk about. So I was not offering whether, I felt it was a good location or not. I'm saying those are the areas that were originally envisioned when council adopted the original ordinance that allowed cannabis, that opted into the cannabis program.
So that was the council that designated that area?
That area was found to be outside of those, uh, key buffer zones, a thousand foot.
I mean, but there's other areas that are outside of it too. I'm just wondering why that area...
That was, that was kind of a blanket statement that maybe was a little too cavalier on my part, but what I'm saying is that, that was an area that was always envisioned that was outside of those, if you start drawing the buffer lines and the maps and things. That was an area that was, uh, not pretty clear, but the, the most clear, uh, of the buffering restrictions.
More so than Newman Springs Road?
Not more so, no. Not more so, but as much as.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
From, from the original ordinance, they would be seen very much in the same light.
I was just wondering why just one area is being targeted when there's other areas? That's, that's my question.
That's the applicants are, are picking, I guess, perhaps available locations or spaces that are open to rent, or areas that they think, uh, would be more feasible for their business than others, of those that are deemed more likely, like this area or Newman Springs Road.
Is, is Newman Springs also?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yep.
So, so I can hopefully provide a little more clarity. The original ordinance, um, specified a thousand feet from schools. So this Bridge Street area would have been that. And also, the amendment that the council, uh, adopted but was objected by the planning board would have also included Bridge Street and this particular area. But this is known as a commercial district, it's actually a mixed-use district. So that's why these were picked in the original and the, and the amendment to be where retail cannabis could be sold because it is a commercial district, as you know. So that, that's...
Isn't Shu's Berry Avenue, like you left it?
Right.
That's what I'm just saying, I'm wondering why that, this, this one area was targeted.
Well, uh, I mean, a- as the chairman said, I, these are the applicants who feel these are the...
Yeah, but that's the only option they got, really.
Well, it, well, it's not really, there's a lot, there's several areas in town. It comes from Valerie said, I mean, it's not, this is not the only street in town that this use is conditionally permitted. It just so happens that two retailers chose this street. They could have chosen many others, but didn't. But they certainly weren't pushed in any one direction by the town beyond where the town thought it was good to, or bad to put it.
Okay, I just, you did, it's just kinds of room, this ruins this area up with the traffic. Because I think you all know how heavily trafficked that area is. It's very heavily trafficked and it's backed up every day. And it's just, it's a bad spot to be putting everything in one spot.
Thank you. Somebody else with a question?
I have a question for, maybe with Mr. Lexton. What is the role of the cannabis control board with this application? Does it have to still then go before, that, 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 you don't really answer that one? Shut them up. How about you?
Um, so the cannabis control board informed under the borough's ordinance? Okay, so that's, we, um, they get approval from this board and then get approval from the CRC and then have to present a report of the cannabis review board and then council, recommendation from council.
Anyone else from the board of the public have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, I just...
Go ahead, Christina.
I just had a quick question. Were the hours that you're talking about, I believe it was eight to ten, was that, were those the hours that you spoke about when you, uh, got approval for the medical?
The medical ordinance dictates, uh, eight to eight, I believe.
Okay, so this is an extension?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. I'm Nancy Black with thirty-four Chestnut Street. Um, I just have a question and maybe a comment. And the question is, uh, to the applicant, are you aware that there's a parking garage about a block and a half away? And as you were thinking about virtual queues, um, this is where I make a suggestion, you might want to take a look at that parking garage and maybe customers can utilize that.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we're gonna take a ten-minute break.
This clarification? You folks are approved for, uh, by the state of twenty-twenty-one? Okay, and then here, there's that approved, yes. Okay, that, that was what I meant to... Oh, look at me.
Yeah, so that, yeah, the award, uh, called an award.
Right.
Approved award, it's got five steps.
Yeah.
So, but then you gotta find a space and then you gotta...
Right, right.
We've awarded twenty-twenty-one, perfected that award by finding a space. September twenty, Tyler, he's got a permit.
Yep.
And then the last step is basically...
Yep, right. Yeah, then they threw another, that's CFC.
Well, that, um, for adults, yeah. So for men, you'll be only step back, you need to stir, say, instructions down.
Yep. Right. We've got that, that, no regulations at all. And so we see, or don't, they, they didn't make any, so, everything was...
From that, yeah.
Yeah. Well, for everything, right? Yeah, if we say by, by August of twenty-twenty-one, they had to, the borough had to put in, if they wanted prescriptions, and they did not, so, everything's open. And see, we were looking, we were supposed to, right, once all, let's say, look over here. There's like thirteen, okay? Yeah. It's good for a hundred fifty-two hundred grand, right, to get there, so... And they now pass the ordinance, they're only getting a lot of these crazy schedules. But the ten people who like, who went through it based on the old, you know, I don't know the other story, but they, they, they were based on the old, you know, where you could be. Yeah, no, I said, yeah, I was just saying, the borough's gonna get that soon. I don't know what's... Okay, yeah, there you guys. I'm wondering, you got anybody who would talk to me about that? Have they, had attorneys? Yeah, I know, I know, I know, yeah, I know, nobody wants to...
Yeah.
Cause again, I think, I mean, these, these people, they don't like, they'll be a hundred fifty-two hundred grand. And it was around three, and they faced it on what was allowed, you know, when they did their stuff.
I've seen that all over, I'm just here to be honest.
Yeah. But I think, you know, like, I remember, it's like, they say high school, fuck.
No.
Jesus, but, but I think it's like, you know, when they first started, like liquor stores started coming out. You know, right?
Yeah, of course, yeah. They gotta do their due diligence.
Yeah, right, I mean, people are like, when you get a question with, like, you know, you got a hundred, two, four, five. What liquor store?
Yeah.
You gotta stop.
Oh, okay, yeah, and it's, uh, I think...
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's get back to it. Let the record reflect that it is eight forty-five, let's do a roll call, please.
Dan Juan Cusso?
Here.
Michael Ballard?
Here.
Juanita Lewis?
Here.
Lou Demento?
Here.
Christina Bonatakis? Barbara Wallace?
Here.
David Cassidy?
Here.
Frederick Stoeck?
Do you have anything else, or you want to wrap up? Before we get to the comment section of the meeting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll just a quick closing statement. Um, again, you know, we're, we're here seeking conditional use approval as well as site plan approval. Uh, we think we've actively shown that we've satisfied the conditions. Okay, yeah, I didn't know, yes, for...
Do you have anything else?
No, we have no further testimony to add, so that's my only, my only wrap-up.
Okay.
Please...
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Wells, now you can wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll pick up where I left off. Um, we, again, we submit that we've, uh, satisfied the conditional use requirements here and, and with respect to the site plan, again, we, we think the improvements being made represent a benefit overall, uh, to a site that needs some attention. Um, so we think what we've done to the property so far, and what we're proposing to do with the additional landscaping requirements, restricting to the parking lot to facilitate the ADA requirements as well as the, uh, sidewalk improvements to replace the, the lifted pieces in, in the ADA corner room. Uh, again, uh, quite heavily in favor of this application. Finally, we do submit, again, it's our position, we've satisfied the parking obligation both through onsite parking, uh, via transition from two existing, uh, commercial uses. Uh, but notwithstanding that, we have gone above and beyond by securing passes for eleven additional spaces and heard the applicant's response to the public question as well that they will consider utilizing the parking garage as well, uh, in the event that becomes necessary. Uh, so we would definitely request your consideration for approval this evening and, uh, we do appreciate it for this time, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one, uh, the one tidy up item I think that we did not address was the, uh, prospective road improvement. I had made a recommendation, not a requirement, that the applicant consider a half-section milling repave of their side of the road. Uh, the applicant, I believe, expressed that they would not want to do that, prefer to do that, choose to do that. Uh, I think the board just needs to weigh in on whether they're okay with that or not. Given the context of the application, it's, in my opinion, it could go with the way. Could be included in a future road program, something of that nature. Because of the limited site improvements that they're doing, it might be appropriate that they not do that. I mean, normally, it's, if you're doing big improvements, you would hundred percent do that. In this case, it's, again, that gray area, it would be nice, but I don't know that it would be a deal breaker for the board, for the applicant chairman.
If the board were willing to grant approval, would you make a contribution to do that work?
Not knowing what the contribution is, is would be tough. Again, we, we understand that the conditions and what the board normally asks for, because our improvements here are limited to the interior and we're not really touching the exterior except for, for landscaping, we, we wouldn't really request your consideration for, for weighting that recommendation. Uh, we're kind of at our, at our end of, of what we're able to do here. Uh, and it would be tough. We're open to discussion, of course, but it, it's tough to agree without knowing the deadlines.
So, one of the board, from the board have anything they want to add, or want to make a motion?
Um, I, I just have a, a question, if I may. Um, I understand, not particularly interested in the milling of the road, but, um, because you are opposing potentially extended hours here, um, would you be willing to perhaps increase the buffer with the residential building next door, number forty-three? It sounds like you have the fence, I haven't seen it, um, fence extended further than it did, but... It sounds like you have the fence, I haven't seen it, um, fence extended further than it did, but would you consider adding additional, maybe vegetative buffer on that side?
Yeah, and, um, vegetative buffer.
So, you know, southwest corner?
Right, yeah, so, um, if you're looking at our plan, basically, the, the top right of, uh, as you can see, too.
Correct.
Do you go into additional vegetative buffers and screening? And tall, it's not, you know, with foundation plants up, larger.
Yeah, something for visibility and maybe you can.
Sure. Thank you for what you're.
And, and if, if granted approval, just be sure to submit detail of that line to our engineer.
Absolutely, uh, we do have some renderings of those nights given, as well as submit those as part of that.
Yeah, we certainly don't want it to be too close to the street, that it, that it prohibits any, any visibility.
Absolutely, thank you.
So, so just so unclear, are we talking about the Bridge Avenue front, or are we talking about the rear?
Ri- Bridge Avenue, the southwest corner of the property, against the residential. Maybe, maybe half the distance, maybe half the distance to the curb, to, some additional screening to the residential property to the south.
Say one thing.
Mr. Miletta, right?
Yes.
Is that your house?
Yes.
Yes, come up and speak into the microphone, please.
As far as that, the fence, Devon, they had said they would put the fence all the way to the curb to begin with, but I think you said the town wouldn't let you?
We, 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 well, Ed will say it better than I, no.
Yeah, you can't put a six-foot fence all the way out.
No, not six-foot. He was gonna do four-foot. Like, the rest, everybody, all the other businesses on the street, they go right to the sidewalk defenses. And Devon had said he would put a four-foot, you know, bring it down to four-foot to the street, to the curb, I mean, to the sidewalk, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did propose that, but it was not approved in that way. It was only approved.
And can they go all the way to the, to the sidewalk? Uh, they probably have some.
At the where?
At the right of the line, probably.
So, what do we do?
Behind the sidewalk. You're right to the sidewalk, all the other businesses have it right to the sidewalk.
So, we, we can, if, if we grant this approval, we can, we can require a four-foot fence as far to the curb as, as the engineer would allow. There's a right of way beyond the sidewalk. So, a combination of the lower fence and the plantings. To help mitigate that. Does that help?
It helps, I mean, I'm still not happy with the old, they put them.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking to convince you, I just want, I just want to make sure we're on the same page about what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the landscaping would go to buffer the, um, parking area also? Just that, just the structure? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some other conditions that I have, if, if the board sees to approve, just to, to memorialize here, we would obviously do it in any resolution, that any garbage is, is picked up by a private hauler, as you mentioned. Um, you would not allow any queuing on Bridge Avenue of customers. I'm, I'm also concerned, I just want to make sure, and you did mention it, that there's no light spill over, our ordinance is no more than half a foot candle onto the residential property to the south. So, th- that's important, from any lighting that you would add.
Right, the, the lighting that's, uh, would be in question would be that, um, the, uh, the corner of the building where the exit is, the back of the building, and those lights are directional, so they will be directed more, uh, towards the parking lot and away from, uh, Schill's Residence.
Great.
There'd be no light shown on that residential sidewalk.
Terrific. Um, I have two other things, I don't know if anyone else from the board has any, you know, I would, I would, if, if I were to vote for this application, require that you would employ all methods, including the virtual queue system, to reduce anyone waiting on property outside of the building. So, whatever other methods you, you can employ in addition to the virtual queue system, so I said, you, I know you mentioned it was an option, I would make it a condition of approval.
Understood.
Um, and that the employees must park off-site. I'm not gonna say specifically in those eleven spaces, because you don't own those spaces yet, but the employees should park off-site and not on, not on public, in public street parking. Granted, the eleven are public, I'm not, I'm, I'm separating those eleven you may lease from my commentary about not parking on Bridge, not parking on Brower. You need to find a place for your employees to park outside of being on-site or on-street parking.
Understood.
Okay. I don't have any other more comments, does anyone from the board want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve subject to your, um, your requirements.
Does anyone want to second the motion?
I'll second.
Dan Macuso.
Yes.
Michael Ballard.
I'm okay with the location, yes.
Juanita Lewis. Lou Demento.
Yes.
Christina Bonatakis. Barbara Wallace. I'm gonna send up. David Cassidy.
Yes, I, I wanted different hours, I'm gonna send up.
Still gonna pass?
It passes. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you coming, I know for many of you it wasn't the, the result that you wanted, but I very much appreciate your involvement. We have one more application tonight. We have AD Shrewsbury Avenue, block thirty-nine, lot twenty, lots twenty-three and twenty-four. This is the Borough Red Bank of the WD Zone for a minor subdivision of both variances. The applicant proposes minor subdivision and lot line adjustments to subdivide the parcel containing lots twenty-three and two into two separate. How do you vote? There we go. No, no, no new construction is proposed on the new lot, additionally, applicant is seeking both variances for minimum lot area and minimum lot frontage proposed on twenty-four oh one. Okay, you're up.
Thank you, uh, good evening, uh, and thank you for your time this evening. Uh, my name's John Burke, I'm with Antonella Cantor Rivera, uh, our office serves as the Borough Attorney for Borough Red Bank. Sure, is this better? Okay, great. Um, uh, so as I said, my name's John Burke, I'm with Antonella Cantor Rivera, our office is the Borough Attorney for Borough Red Bank. Um, uh, following a council resolution, the Borough Attorney and the Borough Engineer made a subdivision application, uh, before you know, uh, to preserve rear, the rear area of the Senior Center for Open Space and Perpetuity. And our ultimate goal is to put this on the Borough Open Space Registry. Uh, we are seeking two variances for lot size and lot frontage. Um, however, right now, there are currently two lots, one that's not conforming and one that's conforming, and the property. There's only one lot, yes. Um, and it's, uh, basically what we're seeking is to, uh, move, uh, make the rear area of the Senior Center into a, uh, separate lot that is reserved as open space. Um, there are positive criteria here, uh, to, to promote open space for public's use, promote general wel- welfare, and promote the visual environment. Uh, these are all explicit purposes listed under the municipal land use law and Red Bank Code. Um, there are no negative criteria, as, uh, this would not detriment the public good, this would promote the public good, and rather than impair the intended purpose of the, uh, municipal land, land use law or the Red Bank Code, it would promote that, uh, because open space is explicitly listed as one of those purposes, which would be our goal here. Um, there's no new construction, there's no, no new use, uh, we will maintain the Senior Center as it is, and, uh, seek to reserve the area behind it, as I stated, as open space. We only have, uh, one witness this evening, and that's the Borough Engineer, who actually has a presentation, um, and thank you for your considerations.
We swear we weren't here. We didn't tell the truth, who's the reference?
I did.
So, I have a handout. This is where he was referenced.
What are you doing with this by explanation? There, there are two tax lots, but they are, they merge under the rule of the law. So, the river is only one lot, not two.
All right, let's try this again. All right. All right, so, uh, as previously stated, the, this is the lot in question, the river is, uh, at the top of the plan. Um, previously, this, uh, lot system here was known as lots twenty-three and twenty-four. Total area, uh, of the two lots is roughly fifty-six thousand square feet. The minimum lot area in the zone in question, the WD Zone, is thirty thousand square feet. So largely, uh, the property line as it existed pre-Lockner, as per Mr. Lexi, sort of ran down through the center of the building, had a fifty-foot roughly lot, uh, to the south, and then the remainder lot was this piece, so interestingly enough, this lot line kind of went through the center of the building. The proposal here today is really a lot line adjustment slash minor subdivision to, uh, obviously, this would be removed, and this line that you see here, running generally at the top of, albeit not exactly, uh, there was sort of an arbitrary line that came to me, uh, from some council inputs on ultimately what they were trying to accomplish here. Uh, but the net effect is, is this, this area here would be preserved, there are no buildings planned, uh, no structures planned, uh, there could be a question about, um, frontage, uh, one of the variance relief, uh, variances asking, seeking to get variance relief from is the lot frontage. Generally speaking, lots are required to have access to, uh, a street, in this particular case, the statute really talks about building lots and not being able to get a building permit for a lot. So if you wanted to build a building back here and it was landlocked, technically wouldn't be able to do it, uh, without variance relief here, this is not actually a building lot, so, in this particular case, the way the lot areas worked out, this lot in the front containing the existing Senior Center building would, uh, still be fully compliant. The lot in the back here would be undersized, just a little bit under sixteen thousand square feet, um, and the balance of the lot area in the front would be a little under forty-one thousand square, uh, forty-one thousand square feet, just a little bit under an acre, which would be fully compliant. So really, the question at hand, uh, we also were proposing a, uh, an access easement by way of the northern property line, uh, just to preserve the intended, and the access that may be required to get to the back lot in perpetuity. Uh, and again, the, the conversation here really is about preserving the rear space, uh, along the river. It is noted that it's a very steep, uh, drop through there, it goes from, it's probably about a twenty to twenty-five foot drop from the top of the bank down to the river there, so it's pretty steep. Uh, likely wouldn't be able to really build on that lot, even if you wanted to, you know, in terms of regulations and the ability to build anything, that would be challenging. So that, that's largely, uh, why we're here tonight. Again, uh, the attorney cited that we were tasked with this exercise by council, uh, asking us to, to bring this before the planning board for your consideration. I have to answer, any questions?
I, I have a, a couple of questions for Mr. Byrne. So, the, the law merged these two undersized lots into one.
Yes.
And now we want to break them into two.
In order to preserve.
Those other lots are tax lots, they're not property line lots, they might have been years and years ago, but they're tax lots. And tax lots, you can have ten of them, but they're gonna, they're, they'll merge into one, so this is one lot by Lockner, by the Lockner case.
So, you, I, I understand why we want to subdivide it, make an undersized lot to preserve it for open space when it's a twenty-five-foot steep bank that's open space now.
To make sure that there, the lot isn't sold, that there's no issue in the future, that, uh, the open space is preserved in perpetuity, and I think to place that lot separately on the open space registry, uh, rather than having to try to issue with the, the whole Senior Center lot.
But, so if we do that, it puts it on the state registry?
Uh, I believe so.
And so, so that then forever it is encumbered with restrictions by the state of New Jersey? And what do we get in exchange for that, if we do that?
We would preserve the open space for public's use.
But can't the town do that anyway?
I, I guess.
Why, wha- what's difference between this and a conservation easement?
Uh, this is the route that, that the council directs us to.
I, I, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, I mean, I don't, I don't understand why we're creating, undoing what Lockner did and creating an undersized lot for preserving something that is already what it is, and is a twenty-five-foot steep bank down into the river that physically couldn't be built on. That I can't imagine the state of New Jersey would ever give a permit to build on.
Well, we never know what the future holds, but I can tell you the council's, uh, thought behind this was exactly what was explained, is to preserve this as open space in perpetuity, so that we, we ha- we, we have an opportunity to create park space, which is very rare in Red Bank, in a very crowded town, we can preserve this forever. We don't know what the future holds as far as engineering advancements go, so we, we want to preserve this for our future residents, and, and that's the only reason we thought this was the best way. I think what was brought up was a potential, um, you said an easement, a cons- conservation easement?
I, I agree with you a hundred percent about preserving space, a, a conservation easement could do that without giving this up to the state of New Jersey, who.
But that could be undone, though, right?
I think anything, uh, the Rossi could be undone, although hard, much harder to do.
Exactly.
Without a doubt. I, I just, you know, I, we gave up Marine Park for lord knows how little money years ago, and now the Marine Park is on the Rossi's. So, we have, we can only use parking revenue from Marine Park for specific things, it, it has to be available for anyone in the state of New Jersey. We're giv- we're giving this up to the state forever to them to impose inspections from the DEP and regulations for nothing. And I think we could still preserve it, either with a con- and none of this has anything to do with the planning board, I don't love the idea at all of creating undersized lots, and I think there's probably a better way to accomplish what we agree should be done than giving up land to the state, who will never give it back. But the basis of everything I'm, I'm talking about here is, I, I don't like the idea of creating an undersized lot that really is inaccessible in any way from, from something that now, after being merged by law, is a conforming sized piece of property. That's just my personal opinion.
Conforming size for, for.
For what, for what? Well, for what it is right now, how many millions of dollars did we just spend on this property on behalf of the residents? And I'm very glad that we did. I don't like the idea of cutting it up and giving, that losing forever full in ownership of that to the residents in Borough of Red Bank. And creating an undersized lot during that.
You had, you had mentioned. My question is, you, you had mentioned something about conservation, uh, and I had, I had done some reading also on this, and I'm caught, so I'm kind of a deed restriction, so, um, would, would be more appropriate for this particular piece of property than putting it on a Rossi, which in order to do anything to it, you, you have to beg the state for it, and you also, if ever you wanted to sell any of it, you have to buy, have a piece of property that's, what, two and a half times bigger than it to replace it in Red Bank, and I can't even find, I don't think there's a, a lot two and a half times bigger than that that would be available. But, um, I want to know if any, any of the other explanations would make as much sense, because if you have a deed restriction, you still can't sell it. And if you have conservation, obviously that must fall into the same kind of a category as a deed, uh, some kind of a deed restriction. So why do we have to, a lot of the way has to be bifurcated anyway, but, I mean, uh, but if we, if we voted to bifurcate it, what would the advantage of putting it on a Rossi? And then I don't see one, I don't, it will cost a lot more money to do that. It will, and a deed restriction is just either a conservation deed or just a regular deed restriction, seems to make more sense for the town.
I, I think rather than, um, characterizing it as, as giving it away to the state, I would characterize it as a more permanent preservation of the open space. And I understand there's other ways to do this, but like was stated earlier, this is something that would be harder on the day.
I just have a practical, uh, question. What's the role of the zoning board in this? If we vote yes, what does that mean?
First of all, we're the planning board.
I'm sorry. The planning board. I think maybe it's a go-to zoning. No, but, um, what does it mean if we vote yes? Does it mean it's on, or does it mean we disagree?
We're just here to do a subdivision. And all that we should be focused on is, do we want to subdivide this property into two lots? The intention beyond that is for this property to be deeded over to the, the state, to, for, to be added to the state open space inventory.
Is that a role of the planning board to step in?
A hundred percent.
So if we make, if we do that, then the state, I mean, then the council, we go to the state and ask for the Rossi?
There's a process that yes, that that happens.
But that's, this, that's, this is the first thing that would have to happen.
Kind of the second of, of several things, the first being the council sending it here in the first place. Yes. But our, our, our decision really is based on, do we want to subdivide this piece of property? That's really it. Do we want to take what is a conforming sized piece of property now and make it non-conforming?
Is that piece of property accessible by the public? I mean, how do you get to it?
It, it will be, um, as the engineer spoke about, for an easement. Oh, yeah, there would be an easement along that.
Currently, it would be through the senior center or around the senior center, but I believe the engineer mentioned that there would be an easement to access it, uh, in the future as well.
Is there, um, is it connected to any, uh, riverwalk thing or anything? Or is it just separate by itself?
No, that is one of the issues, is that it would be a, a land, other landlocked parcel.
And if, if this were to happen and the, the council were to put this property on a Rossi, and the day ever came where we got funding to do a riverwalk, would we be allowed to add riverwalk structure along the waterline in this property?
I would take that would be consistent with the, uh, open space, uh, concept park type. My expectation is, we probably won't get that, but I would see why it would.
Okay.
And, and long-range planning, if, if we're thinking, you know, in the future, if we were to set this aside as open space, and we could possibly get grant money from the state to put a, an observation deck, uh, on that property to oversee the river. I mean, that's, that's a use that would be consistent with, you know, a Rossi designation for open space use. So, again, there are opportunities here for us to create public park in Red Bank, which is, you know, not something that comes along lightly. I understand it's undersized, but, and, and not very accessible, but that's the whole point of it, to preserve the, the natural beauty of it in perpetuity. So I support it, that's why I supported it at the council, I'll support it here, and I hope the planning board also supports it.
We still own it, I mean, we can still make it a park. I mean, it's still borrowed property. Does anyone from the board or is anyone from the public have any questions regarding this application?
If this winds up bifurcated on the Rossi, that, that's within state control. Would the, would the, would the senior center be limited in how they could utilize that land? Or it's just then just public land?
I, I don't believe they would be, um, but I guess I would go back to the, the only thing that we're here for today is, uh, to discuss the subdivision, and that is our, our goal ultimately long-term, is to promote the open space.
So, so by definition, the, the Rossi, uh, DEP? Uh, by definition, when you have properties under municipal control, um, at the time, uh, so if it's designated for open space, even, even if you don't apply to DEP for that consideration, uh, it's automatically implicit in the recreational open space inventory that all properties owned by the borough, under control at the time of any kind of a filing, uh, are automatically considered as part of that open space, whether specifically indicated or not. We've run into that, um, though in, in some past cases, so. But basically, the reason to separate it would be so that it's separate and distinct from the frontage, uh, lot. So that, 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 that would be the benefit of, of subdividing it, would be that that rear lot then could be its own parcel, and it would be designated by, and separated from the, the building lot, which wouldn't be encumbered under the Rossi.
Yeah, I've got no objection to preserving that piece of land. If it goes on the Rossi, can the state block public access to that land if it winds up? The state has control, could they theoretically say, we don't like a twenty-five-foot slope, and that it's under state control, and we have no say in that blocking access? Or is part of it on the Rossi that they have to allow public access?
Generally, there's public access doctrine that would dictate that they wouldn't be able to exclude access. Now, as someone, I think maybe chairman indicated, uh, with the Rossi comes open access to everyone, right? So in theory, you see some cases where you have folks coming from out of town. Some people like that, some people don't care for that. So that's a function of, it's a, it's kind of a jewel over there, and if you haven't seen it, you should go take a look at it. It's definitely taking shape out there.
It's not as inaccessible as some people think, because once all the brush.
Once all the brush was cleared away by Cindy Burnham and, and some other volunteers, and the steps are, are coming into focus, and, you know, there's the accessibility over there that not many knew, uh, and that, you know, it, it will be used if we go ahead with this.
Uh, will the large no trespassing signs be taken down? There are, was I mistaken? I believe that there are signs that say no trespassing at the moment.
As per economy, yes.
I have a question about that, public access. Alright, here, here we go. If we turn it over to the state, we bifurcate, if we turn it over, and little old lady, me, just goes over there for a walk, fall down and break my leg, hit whatever I'm gonna break, whose insurance is it, the state's or ours?
I'm sure it's ours, the town still owns the property.
Right, so what are we getting from the state? What are we actually getting from the state by putting it on the Rossi? We can bifurcate it if, if we wanted, if we want to, that's a different story. What, what are we getting? We're not getting anything.
Alright, let's just clear up two things. This is an application for a subdivision. And, uh, the speculation, and obviously the, what people want to do is preserve this property for open space, which can be, I said, can be done by a deed restriction, can be done by conservation easement. If we're concerned that we really want to do this and, and, and want to know, I don't think, I've heard what the state can and cannot and would not do. So do we want, if we're thinking about doing the bifurcation, do we want to continue this and find out what the state regulations and permissions are? Are all we clear that we can not do this and, and perceive maybe by conservations? That's, I think, the question we want to avoid. I don't think there's any question that this property is going to be preserved as open space, one way or the other.
So speaking of questions, I do want to offer the opportunity for anyone from the public, because this is all we've got, you can ask a question or you can make a comment. Mrs. Hill, you had your, or Mrs. Hill, excuse me. Uh, you had your hand up first, you're welcome to come up.
Thank you.
I have to swear again, because it's a different application.
Oh, well, okay then.
Do you swear to tell the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do, indeed. Uh, I would just like to comment, really, I don't have a question. I have been back there, and I urge all of you to go back there and, and check out the property. It is a jewel, it's a gem. I was there for thirty minutes, I saw baldy gold flying over, there's an egret still in the, the marshy area there. Um, there are deer, there are woodchucks. It is a fantastic location, and it's beautiful waterfront. I don't care, you know, I, I, I'm not you, I don't deal with these issues. But the one thing I want to be sure is that we, you designate, you do whatever you can so that this cannot be undone. And my understanding, and I, I may be wrong, is that the Rossi was the best way to do that, to ensure that ten years from now, somebody doesn't decide to do something with it.
I don't know if that's correct, see, that's the problem.
You don't know if it's correct?
Well, you just said, that it's the best way. So, we don't know it at this point. But certainly, the borough being controlled, there was a conservation easement, it would run to the benefit of the borough. So if it's ever going to be developed, which seems impossible, would be the borough that would have to release, but at least the borough would have to control. Saying if it's a conservation easement, the borough could just get out of the easement and develop. Because it gets easier, I don't know.
But it, it's possible, it's possible, it's not easy to do, but yes, it's possible.
But if it's on Rossi?
It's a next, it's next to impossible.
So the idea, I would say is, um, we, we're concerned that some council may come in sometime in the future and decide, hmm, maybe we should sell the senior center and, and make a apartment complex there, and that's a whole area, you part of the apartment complex. That's probably, that kind of came up in the past, I don't know how. I figured that was part of the, so that would make that impossible. Yeah, so the Rossi, yeah, to make it impossible.
And then to preserve it as open space in perpetuity.
And that's what I'd like to endorse, so I'm gonna step away, but thank you. Yes, I do. Cindy Burnham, Seventy-one Wallace. I might be able to clear some stuff up for you guys. Okay, so Marine Park is green, is a Greenacre Park. It's Greenacre funded. That means it comes under a lot of rules. Like, we're not allowed to permit, uh, parking to the hospital, all kinds of things like that. Now, when, when Maple Cove went on the Rossi, there was no problem with that. Maple Cove is not Greenacre funded. The state doesn't come out and do anything, you know. It's, they, the, the state just wants to put land on the green acres so that people can enjoy it and to preserve partly land. And that's what this little area is. Um, we're not losing, you know, uh, we're not losing it forever. I mean, it's safer on the Rossi, it's harder to get it off the Rossi than a deed restriction is easy. And, and Lou, you were absolutely right. If the borough sold the senior center, they could sell the back too. And that's why certain people on the new council want deed restriction as opposed to putting it on the Rossi. For, as far as the access to the right of way, that is to the right of the senior center, and I believe, Ed, is that ten feet? Did you ever figure that out?
Yeah, we showed it as ten, just as kind of a, but likely we would probably want to widen it.
Right, because Ed, Ed was over there, and so I've been cleaning it up with a landscaper. We took out all the brush, and then we looked at the natural lay of the land, and we got it shored up, and I found the original steps. Oh, you know all this?
I, I, all the pictures online are very impressive.
Oh. But, um, we've had a lot of donations and a lot of help with this project. I mean, Red Bank gave us, uh, we redid all the steps with old sidewalk slates, and they're con- concreted to cinder blocks, and, um, made a little terrace. I mean, it's just a nice place to go and sit, and like what Ms. Hill said, uh, there's swans, and there's ducks with babies, and it's just a nice nature area. And I was over there the other day watering the grass, and there was already a man there, and we were talking, we sat down and talked, and then somebody else came in the public access area, and he had a cup of coffee, and he sat down, and he just sat there, and, you know, looked at the water and drank his coffee and then left. But it would have a public access sign, and it would have a poster or fence between the public access and the, uh, senior center, and that's where the sign would go. No trespassing, because we want to keep, yeah, we want to keep the people off the senior center side, right? So that's where that would go. And, you know, it conforms to everything you say in the master plan, you know, we want more open space, we want more access to the river. This would be the only access to the river for public access, for the swimming river. So.
Although it is now. Bifurcating this lot doesn't make it anything that it isn't now. That's my point, it is open space now, it is accessible by the public.
It's unprotected.
Well, it's protected, it's owned by the borough.
It's unprotected, just like Lou said, and, and it's, I mean, we had to say, fight to save the Cedar Center. I mean, you know, that was in the works. Right, so that's why now we're fighting to save the back end. Because if, for some reason, the senior center ever does get sold, at least we can maintain the back. And you can still put the riverwalk, although I think that's the worst thing you could ever do in Red Bank over there. I do. Vandalism, vandalism is crazy, I mean, look at Riverside Gardens, look at Marine Park, it's all vandalized, you know.
Anybody else?
Okay, so, thank you, I'm done.
Come on up, Nancy. Come on up, Nancy.
Yes, Nancy Blackwell, 34 Chestnut Street. Thank you for hearing me. Go ahead. Should this lot be, well, do you know at this point what the process is at the Rasi in looking at the piece to say whether or not they would accept or reject it? And I think you were alluding to that. That's why you wanted to understand what the requirements were, if I'm not mistaken?
I don't know what we know about it. See, we're looking, this is a subdivision application. It's obviously what everybody wants to do is to preserve this property and much the way, whether this, the state is any heavy-handed or not heavy-handed. Yes, this, the, it's, it's unbelievable that the, the borough would ever rescind the, the, the conservation easement, but yes, that's possible. So I don't know if we know the answer that you're raising. Maybe this should be continued till we find out. I don't know.
I think that anything is possible. I think anything is possible. Something could be taken off the Rasi. Again, a difficult process, but it is by theory possible. Just like it would be as a conservation, by theory possible. And we're all talking about a lot of theories, but we're not getting to what we are all agreeing on, which is that we all want to preserve this open space. And we want to do it in a manner that is efficient and effective. And what would, in my humble opinion, would be efficient and effective for the borough is to do a conservation easement or deed restriction or something where the borough maintains full control of the property. And I also say this from the fact that, putting on my environmental commission hat, if we wanted to build an osprey nest over there, if this property was on the Rasi, now there's another process to jump through to put up a telephone pole to get a nest for a bird to, to stay. So, you know, I think it's rather draconian. What is, the, the reason for the split of this property just appears draconian, in my opinion. That's, I'll have to say about that. Thank you.
So Nancy, I can say that the D E P has been, we have been in constant contact at the council level with the D E P. Now, you did not get their measurements of what would be a good bifurcation that they would accept, but they were, um, very supportive of us pursuing this because they, they did get the property.
But we get nothing now.
We get open space. I, I don't understand. But we don't have it preserved. There's nothing to say that the, the next council or the council after that or the council 20 years later decides that they're gonna sell that entire property. And being sloped or not, that there's some development come up that o- overhangs that slope, you know, through some engineering, there, there, there are plenty of them.
Correct.
And, and we lose all of that. And then everybody says, oh, well, I guess we should have put it on the Rasi. Oh, well.
Oh, well, but what if the state says, hey, we're going to reduce our restrictions on the Rasi? I mean, anything can happen. So to me, this is just a draconian method of trying to preserve the open space. I mean, that's my opinion.
Okay, I.
And I know everybody's entitled to that.
I disagree that it's draconian to create open space.
We are creating open space. We have alternative means that I feel are more efficient and keep it within borough control. And I think that's important.
Until it's not.
Until the Rasi does something too. It's the same, okay? I know where this is coming from and I think we can't say this is on the record. I was gonna say, let that shit go.
I have a question.
Shoot.
When the borough decided to make a new Bell Haven into a park, I think it did a poor job. Chopped down trees. It didn't have to be chopped down. I go there now, it looks sort of like a wasteland. They planted trees. They didn't take care of them. They died. Some trees have been vandalized. It looks pretty sad. It looked better than it did before. And I'm wondering, but there's a lot of trees in this area. If it's an easement, could the borough do the same thing there? Just say, well, I think all these trees should go and have a better view from the senior center or something?
Well, actually, I will say that the state of, the newer state of Bell Haven is actually more in line with what, to my understanding, the recreational open space inventory the Rasi actually is looking for. The spirit of that is for people, not so much natural habitat. And one thing that I can speak to, um, that is not theory from my readings of the Rasi requirements, Miss Burnham, you spoke that yes, if it's not a green acres funded property, there are different requirements placed, but there are still requirements and there are encumbrances that come with being on the Rasi. One of them, for example, is that you cannot create natural habitats, as in for, for wildlife. That's not the intention of the Rasi. So you would not have that option open to us if you went down that path. And that concerns me very much. It makes me question seriously if the Rasi is at all the right tool for this. Um, I, I personally believe that it's not.
But, but it, um, it leaves us open to doing, you know, like I said, chopping down trees and just deciding we need a better.
Actually, that's, I don't believe that the, the Rasi prevents us from doing that either.
The R and Rasi is recreation, whatever that means. And I don't know enough about it. And maybe, maybe we should carry this and get some more information about our options and what could or couldn't happen. I have one more question on this.
If we were to go with a conservation easement, do we still have to bifurcate this property to preserve? It would just leave it and preserve it as is?
Until you sell it.
I mean, it's an interesting issue about the fact that it can become a more of a nature preserve and the point is that is the other alternative more for people? I don't know. That's why I think we should.
The O is for open, open space. The R is for recreation, but the O is for open.
And, and I don't know enough about that either. And I feel like I'd like some more information before I made a decision. So that being said, I will make a motion to carry this through our next meeting. I'm sorry, I didn't know I needed a left, so we'll wait a minute. Go ahead, Ms. Hope.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Linda Hill again, 64 McLaren. I assume I don't have to swear to tell the whole truth or anything now? All right. I hear what you're saying and I respect wanting to gather as much information as possible. But as you just said, and I think several of you have said, the question before you is to subdivide or not to subdivide, right? It's, it is not your purview to apply for this to be a Rasi or, or anything like that. Is that correct?
In general, yes. But if I had, if I have to make a decision tonight, my vote is no. I'd like to get some more information before I make a final decision. But I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to carry this. Someone has to second it. And we need a vote of a majority to carry it. And if that doesn't happen, then we'll get to a vote.
I've got it. Okay, thank you. Can I just ask, if you're carrying it forward, can you come back with information that says what is the best way to preserve this in perpetuity? Can I ask you?
We, we could ask someone for that opinion, yes. I'm certainly not gonna render that. I'm gonna read what we have and, and make my unlawfully formed opinion.
Got it. Thank you.
One of the questions is, we don't agree on how it should be preserved. Should we preserve this recreation?
That's not really our purview. That's up to the council to do.
Oh, yeah, but we make the decision on Rasi versus.
We don't. We make a decision.
No, we let, we allow the Rasi to take pleasure.
No, we make, all we're doing tonight is talking about whether or not we want to subdivide this property. With the information I have right now, I'm uncomfortable doing that. I'm willing to carry this to get some more information. So let me get back to that. I make a motion that we carry this application with no further notice to the public to our July, can you have room? What's the next one?
May I, may I motion to deny?
Well, let me finish my motion first. August 7th, is there a second to my motion to carry?
Wait, question.
Not until we get a second or not.
You didn't close the public.
You didn't close the public.
There's no second, so my motion dies. So Christina, what were you gonna say?
I, I will motion to deny. It just, to me, it seems like the ultimate lie is like a time traveling conspiracy theory and I don't agree with the two of us, so I would like to motion to deny conservation.
I said deny.
So the vote is yes.
Wait, are we, did we close the public portion? No, we didn't close the public portion.
You have something new. You were, we, we, we don't legally have to close the public portion of the meeting. You, you had an opportunity to comment and a motion and a second has been made.
I, I do have a question because of your pushing it. So because you're gonna be a new body on July 1st, do we have to start from square one with you guys?
If there's a vote, the vote tonight stands on its own.
But if you push.
Whatever new bodies exist, whether we're here or whoever, that's, that can happen next time. But this is a vote on this application and as Mike said, a yes vote is to deny the subdivision.
Damon Kusso?
Yes.
Michael Bell?
No.
Anita Bliss? Lou Demento? Christina? David Cassidy?
I just want to be on record, I'm really uncomfortable right now. I don't like the way this, uh, we should have carried this. I don't like the way this discussion went, but I'm voting no.
Frederick Stone?
So what does this mean?
It's the subdivision is denied. The application has been denied.
You're all crazy.
Open to development.
Open to development.
Motion to close, uh, to adjourn the meeting?